We're going to go ahead and get started. I now call to order this joint meeting between the Anchorage School Board and the Anchorage Assembly. It is Friday, March 3, 2023. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Chair LaFrance.
Here.
Vice Chair Constan. Thank you, Mr. Constan. Mr. Cross.
Here, thank you.
Ms. Dern. Mr. Presbidea. Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson.
Here, good morning.
Mr. Rivera.
Present.
Mr. Salt.
Here.
Mr. Sweet.
Present.
Mr. Voland. Ms. Zalatell.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. President Bellamy. Okay, Member Holloman is excused today. Member Jacobs.
Present.
Member Donley.
Here.
Member Higgins. Member Lessons.
Here.
Member Wilson.
Present.
President Bellamy.
Present.
We do have a quorum. Thank you. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. President Bellamy, would you do the land acknowledgement, please?
Yes, thank you. On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout the generations. We are grateful for the opportunities to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples. Shana.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Good morning and welcome, everyone. Appreciate you all being here today. Also want to wish all the employees a Happy Employee Appreciation Day. And those of you who work for the school district and the municipality provide essential services to our community, thank you for all you do. You are deeply appreciated. So we will move on to minutes of the previous joint meeting. We have minutes from December 2, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Moved to approve by Mr. Sweet, seconded by Ms. Lessons. Any discussion? Being no one in the queue and hearing from nobody, seeking unanimous consent. Being and hearing no opposition, the minutes from the December 2, 2022 meeting are approved. Next is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Sweet, seconded by President Bellamy. Any discussion on the agenda? Or any changes? I don't see anyone in the queue. Seeking unanimous consent on the approval of the agenda. Any opposition? Being and hearing none, the agenda for today is approved. We will move on to Item D, financial planning, with a budget presentation from the school district. And President Bellamy, I don't know if you are kicking this off.
I will certainly kick it right over to Dr. Bry.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, Assembly and ASD Board. The ASD Board recently approved a balanced budget after about six months of careful deliberation and discussion on our path forward, given a substantial structural deficit. Our new CFO, Andy Ratliff, will provide the Assembly with an overview of the budget and next steps. So kick it off, Andy.
All right, thank you. So first slide is going to be our budget development timeline at this point where the Board has approved our preliminary budget on 21st of February, and that now becomes the proposed budget to submit to the Assembly. We did that prior, slightly prior to the first Monday in March, so you guys can have time to review it before it's introduced on the 7th, and then it'll come to your full approval on the 21st. Next slide. You guys have seen this slide before, probably. We've presented this before, but I don't think this group has, or at least with the Assembly, has seen it updated since the new CPI numbers came out in, I believe, January, which had about an 8.1% increase in the CPI. So we really just wanted to show this slide, which is, for those of you who might not have seen it, tracks the BSIA back from FY17, which is about the last time it was substantially increased. So you can see that dark blue bar at the bottom is our BSA and what it's been over time. Then the other bars are how we filled that gap, either through fund balance or one-time funds from the state, or you see some gaps in there, and a lot of that, a lot of times that'll represent budget reductions. So you see the red line trending up, that's what the BSA would be if it were inflation-proofed since that time. So you can see there's about a $1,200 and almost $70 gap out there between an inflation-proofed BSA, what it would have been, and what it is currently at the 5960, which includes the $30 increase that was in statute for this year. We did spend like the gold bars, that's probably the most interesting, that was the COVID relief money through the federal stimulus packages that we've been using to help shore up the budget the last few years as we've received substantial money, bound of money from the federal government and put that towards just predominantly retaining class size and other initiatives to help stem learning loss. Next slide. So this brief is really going to focus on the two main things that the Assembly is required to approve in our budget, which is, one, the upper limit spending authority, which is how much the district can spend overall. I know the city has a similar upper limit spending cap. But you guys are going to approve ours, then you'll approve our tax request. So those are really the two levers that the Assembly pulls. So just kind of make you aware of what's going to go into both of those numbers, and then we'll talk about some of the structural changes that we made in our budget to get it to balance. So this is our summary of all funds. It's kind of a busy slide. It's small numbers, but overall, our budget is projected to be, our spending request is projected to be 905, a little over 905 million, and that represents a little under $55 million increase. So the reason for that increase, you'll see there's a $49 million increase in the general fund, and then about a $45 million decrease in the grants fund. So as we phased out the amount of our funding, the Easter stimulus that we have available, we are using fund balance to be able to shore it up in the general fund. So not much of that fund, or the general fund increase is new money. It's predominantly going to be fund balance saved from both this year and previous years, and a little bit of new money on our revenue side. But we'll also get through that, and we'll be able to talk through what those revenue items are and how that, what those changes are.
And do you want to take questions now?
I can certainly take questions as we go, and you know, it might be some of the things that we just, that are going to be explained a little bit later on.
Mr. Constan has a question.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, my hand was raised just to let folks know that I was in the outer meeting, and they let me in, so we're good.
Got it, thanks, Chris.
All right, that was easy. So there's a couple of line items on here that we don't really go through within this presentation. The first one is that project carryover line item, it's about $25 million. What that is, is to preserve upper limit authority for money that we didn't expend by the end of this year, or we do our budgets and how we require our schools and departments to view their budget. The other big one on there is the capital project fund, and that's, it shows a $55 million increase there. This is largely money that, when we got the school bond debt reimbursement funds back, the Board had allocated about $55 million to some ongoing security and safety projects. So this is really, and they did, this is money that we received in the last fiscal year, we allocated it this fiscal year, and then planned to get into the construction season and start spending it next fiscal year. So we're putting it in there just to preserve that upper limit authority for the, for the projects we already have going, the money that we've already received. All right, next slide. Okay, so we did get a balanced budget, which addresses our substantial general fund deficit. It uses up the remaining $20 million or so that we project to have in our Easter funding, and then it'll maximize the one-time use of funding that we received from the state this year, which we did not spend, carried over to help offset next year's deficit, and then increased our PTR by plus one at all gray levels. We did make some other structural changes that we will go through later on in the slideshow. So the first slide is our general fund revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. Ms. Lessons has a question?
It is either a question or a comment or a request. With the PTR plus one item that you flagged, it might be interesting or useful for Assembly members to understand which schools in their districts are going to be experiencing those specific cuts. I know it's in, on page 476 of the budget. There are the actual schools that'll lose one teacher or 3.4 teachers, that sort of thing, but that might be of interest to Assembly members.
Right, great question, or comment, but yes, it's a, a plus one PTR will affect all the schools in the district. When you look at the budget and you look at page 476, I don't remember what page it is, but, so if you look at there, it'll show like the difference between, and that page actually includes what we're funding in our general fund and what we're funding in the grants, so just a total of teachers at each school site. But it'll be the combination between enrollment changes and PTR increase. So some schools will either gain enrollment over the years or lose enrollment, so there's a couple of different things factoring into that. Additionally, we did adjust the schools with immersion programs in them to try to get those more accountable to how many staff we're actually putting in there. Previously, we would take those schools, and we had like a pool, what we call holdback teachers, which is just unallocated teachers that we don't hire if we don't need them, or if, you know, if our revenue decline, or if our enrollment declines and we don't need to hire them, then we don't. But we're using a lot of those teachers in those immersion schools because of the, with COVID, a lot of the schools, the students didn't come back, and once you're out of the immersion programs, it's really hard to get back in after kindergarten or first grade or take more students, just the way that those are set up. So we did put some extra FTE, and it was 12 FTE spread across the different immersion programs to help shore up the neighborhood size, so they don't have abnormally large class sizes on the neighborhood side while the immersion programs have smaller classrooms just by way of us not being able to get more kids in those classes, just because they don't have the historical language instruction, I guess. So on our general run revenue slide, you'll see a couple of things circled on here. The first one is the property taxes. You'll see about an $8.6 million increase in our general fund property tax increase or request. This is almost entirely due to the required local contribution going up. A required local contribution is based on the 2020, for our next fiscal year, it'll be based on the 2022 calendar year, and you might recall that we did have a substantial adjustment in the assessed valuation. So when you saw residential property valuations going up by 10%, I think business was a little less than that. That flows through to the school district in the amount that the city has to pay by way they require local contributions. And we'll get into that a little bit more, what makes up the required local and how that affects both local and state funding, but really it's, you know, that 8.6 million is just tied mostly for this year tied to that property tax increase from 21 to 20, calendar year, 21 to 22. You'll see a $45 million line item for fund, usage of fund balance. About 28 or 29 million of that is money we've had in reserves or we plan to have by the end of this year by way of not being able to fill all our positions. We've had about 450 or 500 vacancies perpetually all year long. So what that does is, it does save money financially, but you know, on the flip side of that, you're not really getting the students, the services that, you know, we'd planned to give them. So about 28 or 29 million from both savings that we had from previous years, plus what we plan to save for this year on attrition, and then about 16.2 million or 16.1 million on the one-time money that we received from the state for this year that we chose not to spend to carry forward to help offset that deficit. So you'll see in the state revenue, that's going down by about 3.9 million, and really that, what that consists of is, one, it's an increase in state, or a reduction in state funding by 7.8 million, because that's that shifting of the responsibility from the required local contribution on the local taxes to the, from the state to the city. So while the state pays less money, the district, or the city pays more in property taxes through that RLC. We did lose about $4.8 million in state money on our regular ADM counts, and that's mostly due to the hold harmless provision from when our school enrollment dropped in 2021. We triggered a hold harmless provision there, which gives you money back and steps it down over the course of three years. So next year, that's completely exhausted, so it's about 4.8 million, and that's a change of about 4.3 million in hold harmless and a 500,000 or so in other like school size funding adjustments. We did anticipate receiving about 4.2 million extra in intensive needs funding, so while we do anticipate receiving that revenue, you'll also see, later on we'll discuss, we did have some adds back into our special education personnel, just kind of assuming that we're going to increase our services with the increased needs for those students. And then about 2.3 million in correspondence funding for their increased counts between our three correspondence schools, and about a 2.2 million increase, which is associated with the $30-based student allocation increase that's currently in statute. The other thing to note on this slide would be our federal impact aid going down by about 730,000. That's really, if you're not familiar with federal impact aid, it's a program by which the federal government pays school districts for kind of an allotment for, for us, it's mostly students on, living on Jay Bear. So this kind of, almost like a payment in lieu of taxes where, you know, we can't tax that land, so the federal government gives us a little bit extra there, and then there's a provision in state statute where they take about half of that back from us. So they reduce state funding because we get this impact aid funding. But we are experiencing a little bit of a reduction in there. People transportation, this is another fund that you've probably heard a lot about recently, but for the property tax contribution, we've been thankful that the city has supported us in our transportation fund. This is another area that they can kind of give to us outside of the state cap on local taxes. So in the last few years, we have requested additional property taxes for that. We do have some fund balance associated with having saved money by not being able to run some of those routes. However unfortunate it was, you know, we had, to start the year, about two-thirds of our general ed routes were not being run in kind of six-week intervals at schools. So while we did save money from that, it's unfortunate because it makes it more difficult to get kids to school and learn. So that's $2.5 million in fund balance you see, and since we have that money and we can only spend it on transportation, we are going to reduce the property taxes by as much as we can to help offset that increase to the taxpayers. We are hopeful this is one of the things on our list to discuss with the legislature, you know, trying to get that increase, because the increase for, we haven't had the same, an increase in transportation since kids walked in the door in 2015. It's still that same $481, and our costs go up substantially. As you recall, we had to give our bus drivers about a 25% increase or so just to get people to apply for those jobs, but thankfully it's worked, you know, our routes are filled, kids are getting to school. Student nutrition, there's really not a tax component to this, but just kind of give you a brief overview of that. It's going up by about 3.7% or so, but largely due, you'll see the bigger moving parts are a reduction in the amount of lunch sales, we're projecting, and an increase in the amount of federal revenue, but this fund should be self-supporting and not need contributions from taxes or the general fund going forward. At least for next year.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson has a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. So I noticed on our March 7 agenda that we're being asked to approve the purchase of several buses, and I wondered why that wasn't part of ASD's budget and instead was something we were being asked to approve, but I think your description, Andy, that you just shared answers that question, which is that we are allowed to, the state allows us beyond our max contribution to BSA to also purchase equipment, and is that something we've traditionally done?
Yeah, thank you for that, that's great. So yeah, I believe the memo you have going before you is to purchase buses through the Master Lease Program, which is just a financing mechanism for us to buy those buses, and we do have it in our budget to repay that lease over time. So just, it's more of a cyclical replacement of our transportation equipment rather than having to do kind of larger one-time purchases of buses.
Got it, and why, why couldn't you do that same lease scenario? Is that just something we only have access to?
I believe so, that just runs through the, and you guys, and we can piggyback on the contracts and everything, so it's a lot simpler for us to run it through the city than try to stand up a governmental leasing program on our own.
Got it, thank you, and thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I actually saw a news story that there are school districts outside of Alaska that parents are owing for school lunches, and I'm wondering if we have that kind of a problem, because they were talking about millions of dollars in some of these school districts, and so I'm wondering, are we in that same situation here in Anchorage? Thank you.
I can answer that through the chair. So we do have that same problem, I think it's nationwide. We average, we budget for about $100,000 per year that we pay toward bad debt for student nutrition, because the USDA will not allow student nutrition to use federal funds for that, and what we consider bad debt is for those students who have left the district, those students who have graduated, or those students who have, since they, you know, since school started, it may take months before they fill out the paperwork to be able to receive SNAP or TANF or somehow qualify for free and reduced lunches, and then we write that off at the end of every year. But we do struggle with that, it's actually, you know, problematic, but we try to get ahead of it early every year, especially when they're coming from a CEP school, where federal regulations prohibit us from asking them to fill out free and reduced applications because the whole school is free and it was supposed to be easy, but when they go from a CEP school to a non-CEP school, you know, you've just got to get ahead of that during enrollment and through that first quarter and try to catch everybody up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and I want to note that Robin Dern is on the line, but I believe is unable to unmute, and then Mr. Salt is in the queue, but for the end of the presentation, and Ms. Quinn-Davidson has a question. Go ahead, Ms. Quinn-Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Peterson, for asking that question, the idea to me in 2023 that, you know, kids can't get a free lunch at school, because we know that if you're hungry, you're not going to learn in the same way. It's just so depressing about our country, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but just wanted to thank the school district for doing whatever you can to minimize that debt and support families who need it, because if kids can't eat, they can't learn, so.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. Member Lessons?
Thanks, I just wanted to share with members of the Assembly that the Board recently approved a major policy change to our wellness policy, and one of the elements that's now included, although I think it reflects prior and ongoing practice, is that students are not going to be lunch-shamed or, you know, given a cold cheese sandwich, for example, if they have that debt. I know that that's something that exists in other districts, but that's not a practice that has been implemented in ASD, but now the policy says that that should not happen ever.
Thank you, Member Lessons.
If I could add to that, ASD, there are districts in the Law 48 that have not allowed students to eat or legitimately have given them a cold cheese sandwich. That has never been the practice in Anchorage School District. We allow children to go ahead and get the normal meal, and then we take care of it afterwards. We do send parents notices when they start building balances for unpaid meals, and then we also start working with them and sometimes the ELL department to work with them in order to encourage those families who truly don't have the funds to apply for free and reduced. But I know it's in the policy, but it has not been an ASD practice to ever do that.
Thank you.
Next slide. This will be our debt service fund, which also includes property tax request in it. The local property tax request is going by, down by about 1.25 million. This is largely just due to how much we expect to have to pay back on our bonds. These are all voter-approved initiatives, so it's, you know, it's already set, and once those bonds are sold, we have those payment schedules lined out. We will see a transportation fund contribution in there, about 350,000. That's the line item that actually goes into this fund to repay the bus leases that we have outstanding. So that's kind of technically how it flows through, and you see that there. Overall, you know, we've reduced our bond debt by about $100 million or so over the last 10 years, and I think about 15 years ago, that bond debt amount was up to about 750 million. So we've really made a diligent effort to bring down the amount of debt we owe, you know, however, that does come at a cost with, you know, the condition of our facilities, and you see that deferred maintenance backlog just build and build as our outstanding debt has gone down over the years. It sounds like the state debt bond reimbursement is in the governor's budget and will probably continue to be so, so we do have that, and our budget is fully funded by the state. That does drop off fairly quickly, because anything we've sold in our new bonds since 2015, since the state passed their moratorium on, any new bonds being reimbursed, some of those old bonds, as they fall off, the state continually pays less, while all the new one, bond issues we have, the city's burning the entire amount for. Okay, next slide. So I wanted to spend some time on this slide. This is real, this is going to be our property tax request. This is probably the biggest thing, the decision you, the Assembly needs to make and be able to explain to taxpayers. As I mentioned, we had about $6.8 million in our fiscal year property tax request, and this one's kind of confusing, because we have both fiscal years and calendar years of how it's funded by the Muni. But you see that gray section down at the bottom really breaks out how that property tax request looks by type of request. So the required local contribution going up by 7.75 million is largely the, that's really the reason why it's going up so much. We do have additional allowable contribution that goes up to the max that the state allows in our general fund. That goes up by about 900,000 or so. I would note, though, that $100 million for the additional local, it's about $1.2 million less than what we were, the city was able to contribute in 2017. So all the property taxes increases that we've had over these years, it hasn't gone into the pockets of ASD, it's come out, it's gone back to the state. So like I said, you know, the required local contribution increases taxes, but the state takes that money away. So we get asked that question all the time, why do my property taxes keep going up, and you guys keep still asking for money? And that's, that really is the reason, is because that additional level hasn't gone up, but that required local has gone up and the state has paid less. So it's kind of a zero-sum game for ASD on there, but the taxpayers are definitely paying more than they have, and it's going up even faster next year with that increase in the property valuations. So student transportation, those taxes are going down, debt service taxes, those are going down. If you kind of focus on the calendar year request in the middle with the unfunded bond debt, this will be the effective rate that the taxpayers are going to see. For our calendar year '22 tax request, it was about 7.64 mils, and it did include the $20.3 million in bond debt that was not funded by the state for that year. As we anticipate that going away, we don't, or they funded it for, we're not, and we always did kind of a catch-up thing where the district would pay it out and then request those taxes on the back end when the state didn't fund it. So we're done with kind of that catch-up provision. We don't anticipate any additional tax levies needed for the calendar year 23. So we will see an effective decrease of about $16.3 million in taxes or about 0.45 mils. So it's good news for taxpayers on that front, but you know, probably not so good news that we had to do it ever in the first place. Are there any questions on the tax request? And we know this is kind of the biggest issue that you guys will be facing as the Assembly. If not, we can move on. So we did throw together a quick chart to show over time, you know, it's been about a $17 million increase from FY17 to FY24 on that required local contribution. So the blue line increasing is the amount that the city needs to contribute for that required local contribution. And the orange line going down is the corresponding amount that's deducted from state funding. So ASD's funding changes stay at zero. And then that just shows the split between who pays, who pays the bill for it. So getting in kind of the changes that we had, this is a chart that shows our general fund expenditures by state function, which is the chart of accounts that the state requires us to use for reporting. You'll see the kind of brownish bars in there. By and large, all the costs in those brown bars are in schools in one way or another. The biggest one at the bottom being instruction. And you'll see a red bar that's got $20 million for teachers in our Easter funding. So whatever remaining Easter money we have is going to go towards producing class sizes at this point or retaining as much as we can for, for what we have. All the fun, all the things, the projects that we did have funded out of our Easter money, we did pull those into the general fund. A lot of them that are reduced capacity, like we reduced the amount of available money we're going to have for summer school, for virtual instruction, IT. So those are kind of the bigger components within our Easter spending. But we did pull that into it, things we wanted to, like our career college life readiness initiative to try to get a better alignment with our instruction to our workforce. So we did pull that into the general fund. So you'll see, but those are all kind of within this chart. Then you'll see the two blue bars. That's really our district administration costs, the small blue bar. And then the other one is the district administration support. So what kind of goes into those is our district administration is going to be our cost for our school board, our superintendent, kind of the chief executives like me, legal fees, and then the other big ones like our audit costs. So when we pay for an external audit, that's just district administration. District administration support will be HR, payroll, budget, purchasing, kind of those business side services of it. About 85% of all our costs go to people. So when we talk about inflation, a lot of that inflation is also on our contracts or for people, you know, we can't ask our folks to live a, take a vow of poverty. We need to give them increases to maintain some coal adjustments just to keep their cost of living about the same. So we talk about making reductions, you know, that having most of our costs and salaries and benefits really does necessitate that when you make reductions, it generally comes from people. Utilities and rent, those are fixed costs. You have some in other purchased services, which a lot is like software and kind of maintenance contracts. And then supplies and other stuff makes up maybe 4% of the rest of it. It's, so we really don't have a lot of leverage in that kind of supply equipment, other, other item things to, to be able to make significant reductions to balance our budget. So the programmatic changes that we've made across the district, we did increase the people teacher ratio by one at all grade levels. We talked about that. We did close Abbott Luth Elementary School. And we also closed Ursa Major for the time being, although that wasn't a planned closure. It was due to structural deficiencies in the building, and we closed that for this year already. But we do save those costs in the budget. And if you look at the budget, you will see it being the cost for Ursa Major being taken out. So there are some savings there, however, it wasn't something we planned or were deliberate about, like the school closures. We stood up a new mental health department. As kids came back from COVID, they had, there was increase in the number of behavior issues in both intensity and frequency. So just trying to get a handle on what supports we can provide to students through our mental health initiatives. And then, as I talked about, we stepped down some of those Easter-funded programs, which is virtual summer school and some of the remote learning. We increased the number of special education supports. As, as I talked about, you know, we had an increase in the number of intense students with intensive needs. So as those more, as we have more of those students, we need more supports in the classrooms to help address that population. We made some administrative and operational reductions. And then kind of the other bigger things were the changes in revenue and estimates, both for changes in enrollment, changes in intensive needs students. And we were able to take advantage of some of the pre-K funding that's now offered. There was through the Alaska REEDS Act. It gives us a 0.5 ADM adjustment for preschool students that are not in whether our state or federally funded programs. Like we do, we had gotten state grants for pre-K. We get some special education grants through Title VI to be able to pay for preschools. So, but the ones that we pay for, like through the alcohol grants, we can claim the ADM. And then we stood up eight new classrooms for next year through the funding from those, from those pre-K students being part of the REEDS Act. We were able to take the SRO cost out of our budget. Thankfully, we never really did have to pay those. The Assembly came, actually gave us, put that back in their budget. So we did have it in our budget for this year, but we were able to save that money for use for next year as well as cut it out of our budget for, for next year as well. So it was, that was very beneficial for us to help get our, our budget down. So thank you all for that. And then we did make some adjustments in our vacancy rates. So as we, as I said, we had about four and a half or five million, or 450 or 500 vacant positions perpetually this year. I don't think the outlook for being able to hire a lot of these people is a whole lot better next year than it is this year, frankly. So we're just trying to take our best estimate and see. But it did have an increase in there just to try to get backed up to where we're trending now. And then, as we increased those special education supports for planning purposes and allowing them to hire those folks, you know, on, on the business side, we have to add in a factor of, I don't, I mean, I hope you can hire those people, but I don't think you will. So we were able to adjust it up a little bit that way, unfortunately. But it does help balance the budget. So that's really kind of where we're at in getting to a balanced budget. So yeah, I'm done, so we can ask, take any questions.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't realize you were at the end. So then we'll go to Mr. Salt, and then I have a question.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Andy, my question is, I think pretty basic, but it's, as municipalities looking at going to the online checkbook, I was curious if ASD has any plans to either join us or do something similar?
Thank you for the question, Member Salt. We are aware that the Muni recently went in that direction. Prior to that occurring, an online checkbook hadn't been on the list of priorities for the district. But if there were interests by the board, that is something that we certainly could look into in terms of what are the costs, in terms of resources and dollars to make that happen. I believe we do use a different business information management system than the Muni. So it may not be able to even look exactly the same. So we'd need to invest some resources into figuring that out.
Okay, thank, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Salt. And the question I have, Mr. Ratliff, on the 450 to 500 vacancies, besides bus drivers, what are the areas that are most hard-hit or most difficult to recruit in, or are they just spread across the board?
It's been bus drivers is one. Our student nutrition personnel has been another. It's been continually hard to fill. Custodians, our paraprofessionals that are in the classrooms, or particularly our special education paraprofessionals have been really hard to fill. And then we've had over 100 teacher vacancies this year, which is more abnormal than what we've had in the past. So it really is kind of spread across the gamut of, there's just a lot of vacant positions out there.
Thank you. That's, it's unfortunate. I know it's hard all around at all levels of municipal government and school districts, but definitely that's something that's an area of interest on the Assembly as far as brainstorming and what we can do, you know, to support the municipality as well as you. I have Ms. Quinn Davidson and then Member Lessons next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions, I guess first just a comment that thank you for this presentation. Thank you for prioritizing kids as much as you can despite the shrinking investment by the state. And I know it's really frustrating to be in this position. And we want to advocate, I think I speak for most members, that we want to advocate for you however we can. So please use us if, if there's an opportunity for that. And I'm just sorry that the state legislature is not investing in kids. And I hope they step up for a change. So anyway, thank you. Next comment I wanted to share, I'm sure that you all saw that we passed an ordinance that made Indigenous Peoples' Day in Juneteenth a holiday. And I was wondering what the process is for acknowledgement of those holidays at ASD. And then when you're answering that, I would just bring up that Ms. LaFrance and Ms. Salatell and I are bringing forward a parental leave policy that would grant all parents four weeks of leave, paid leave, which, as we know, is good for families and kids, but also good for the workforce because you're better able to attract and retain employees. So I'm wondering if you have such a leave policy and if you've considered it and if we are able to pass it, which I'm hoping we will, if ASD might consider that as a way to attract employees. Thanks.
Sure, I'm happy to answer that question. And first of all, I love these stickers. These are really great. And, you know, I've gone on record sharing with the board in the past that when I was HR chief in Houston, I actually contributed to making Juneteenth the holiday right before I left. It was one of my last acts. So it's certainly something that we're interested in. But here in ASD, we do have a calendar committee, and we have recently reactivated that committee so we can discuss not just Indigenous Peoples' Day and Juneteenth, but also our snow day strategy. We have some legacy asynchronous learning days from COVID times. There's a lot that we need to look at with regards to the calendar, which is why I've reactivated that committee. So more to come on that. With regards to the parental leave, that's another area where, you know, I have experience in the past with it. But I will defer to our HR chief to see if he has any information you'd like to share on current policy.
Good morning. Martin Lang, Chief Human Resources Officer for the district through the chair. Our leave policies are articulated through our seven different CVAs that we have with our unions and associations. And that is a request that has come forward from some of the groups and is currently being looked at as a negotiated item with at least one of our groups. And we're, we're certainly open to, to looking at that as an option.
And just to piggyback on that, that is something that I'm really interested in. But to the point that the CHRO shared, we have a number of bargaining groups. And in my viewpoint, something like paid leave should be an employee benefit. So we need to figure out a way to strategically implement that across bargaining units, which would take multiple years and a structural plan. So that's not something that we would see next year. And there'd also be a cost to that. And of course, the conversation right now are, are a star budget situation. But more to come on it, it's on our radar.
Any follow-up, Ms. Quinn Davidson? And I just want to note that I did bring stickers from the ombudsman's office that I'll leave here. Next in the queue is Member Lessons.
Thanks. This is really even more of a question for the administration, but since we were talking about vacancies, I think recently on the floor of the House floor, there was a legislator who used the words hocus pocus to talk about education funding and insinuated that things like bus drivers and paraprofessionals, custodians were not instructional. And I just wonder if we, like in a hypothetical world, would we be able to deliver instruction if we had no paraprofessionals and no bus drivers and no custodians?
No.
Okay. I just, I thought they were important to the system. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Anyone else, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just happened to think of this. We, we covered transportation here a few slides ago, and they just settled the, the bus driver strike out in the valley. And I'm, I'm wondering if they obviously must have negotiated a pay increase. Is that going to have an effect on, on our drivers? Are we going to have to raise their, their pay to be competitive with drivers in the valley as well now?
So we negotiated our Teamster agreement prior to December. So we already have a CBA in place. We're in a slightly different cycle than the mat soon.
And I don't know that we've actually seen the details of what they negotiated for. So it's really kind of hard to say whether that'll have effect on whether they'd be able to pull drivers from us or not with what's in their CBA.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. President Bellamy?
I just had a comment on the workforce development. I mean, our, the labor market is impacting every industry within our state. I think there's hope, especially when I look at where, where those future workers are, they're in our schools. And so the investment has to be deep and wide. And I don't, I just don't know. I've never seen this 450 vacancies in this district. And I, I was in it, I've been associated with this district for almost 50 years. I've never seen that. We never struggled to attract and retain employees. They're just not there. Even if we give them money, they're not there. So this is a crucial loop we're in, and I don't know how to get us out of it. I know in the end what it's going to take, but it's going to be all of us. It's not just going to be ASD. So whatever we can, however we can partner to really strategically improve our local and state labor market. I mean, that's what it's going to take. Every district is having these, I mean, the shortage, the shortages are real and, and concerning. And no, we cannot operate schools without adequate personnel. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Would anyone else like to get in the queue? Just pausing for those online? Sure, go ahead, Ms. Quinn Davidson.
I know you spoke about this, Andy, in your presentation, but we often get the question, you know, enrollment's going down, why are costs going up? Normally, I think we try to answer about sort of scale and how much it costs to run a classroom. And, but I really liked your comment that the state investment is flat, and so our investment has to go up. And I think that's something that I haven't focused on as much. So I guess I'm just asking, when we get those, those questions from constituents, are those the two factors you would highlight? Or how would you phrase it? Because I think it puts pressure then on constituents to say, yeah, if you want your taxes to not go up by so much, you should reach out to your state legislators and ask them to actually invest in education.
Right. And kind of an example of that might be is hypothetically, if we lose 100 students, that's about a million dollars for us. So even if we lose 100 students and lose a million dollars, you know, we have a $600 million budget. If our inflation goes up by 2%, that's 12 million. So we're going to lose, we'll also lose the revenue. We'll be able to cut some costs by the direct services provided to those students. But then everything else, that inflation far outpaces the loss of those students. So that's kind of the thing is, yes, we're losing students, but, you know, it's really kind of pales in comparison to the amount of inflation we experienced on the rest of our costs.
And the concrete example I shared with the Senate Education Committee this week would be bus drivers. So the state was flat on funding for bus drivers since about 2015, 2016. And when you flat fund that, that type of function, one, the number of routes doesn't necessarily decrease if you lose your student or if you have fewer students. And two, you know, fast forward to 2022, and we had two districts that couldn't offer bus service full-time. I mean, the ramifications are truly profound. And the only way that we got out of it was raising, raising the wages by 25%. So the cost of business has just gone up dramatically.
Which also means you had to cut somewhere else, right? Because you're not getting more money.
Right. So potentially money that could have gone in the classroom now has to go towards the bus drivers.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn Davidson. I don't see anyone else. Go ahead, Member Lessons.
This is more of a follow-up comment, but I think it's really important to underscore that with years and years of static funding, we have had available federal relief funds. But instead of using the majority of those relief funds for targeted relief efforts, instead, we've been backfilling the budget year after year after year trying to tread water for classroom teachers alone to maintain those classroom teacher, people-to-teacher ratios. And this year, we can't do it anymore. And this year, we can't do it anymore.
Thank you, member lessons. Ms. Dern? Ms. Dern, are you able to unmute?
I, I, can you hear Madam Chair?
Yes, we can hear you. Great.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question about who I might contact at ASD about a collaboration that I've been talking to with the military, specifically if it relates to vocational training for a program that they may like to sponsor and be involved with, sharing or even maybe covering the costs. They're having the same type of issue recruiting teachers into early education. And they'd like to partner with ASD. And I'd like to know if there's a specific department or person that I should talk to about these efforts.
It would be, I'd like to him with External Affairs. And you're happy to send me an, or I'm happy to receive an email from you or I can email you his contact information.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dern. Anyone else before we move on? Okay, I don't see anyone else in the queue. Thank you, Mr. Ratliff, for the presentation. And we will be coming back to some of these issues when we get to item G for advocacy partnerships to increase the BSA. Thank you. So we do not have any items under E, capital improvement needs. Under F, comprehensive planned land use matters, we do not have any items. And then under G, other matters of mutual concern, the first item, Safe Routes to Schools Working Group, ASD and MOA. Would anyone like to provide an update? I know that the group just met prior to this meeting. President Bellamy?
Actually, I thought Mr. Cross was going to do it, but I'll start. And then whoever else wants to chip in, I see that Heather's still here. So we did meet this morning. And we had several really good discussions and some, actually some wonderful handouts. We talked basically about the work that we've done on two sites that worked, that came up during our last, during our last meeting, as well as comments to the school board. And those, that was Beaver Place and Ocean View. Those sites have been, they are deemed safe and there have been some adjustments made. So that, those two, two sites are, are now well, safe, considered safe after analysis. We talked about some funding opportunities. We talked about projects, the ASD schools and the evaluations that are done by the Muni and the status of what those projects look like. I don't know, Heather, do you want to add anything else? I don't want to put you on the spot, but come right ahead. And Mr. Cross, if you can hear us and you want to clarify or chime in, please do so. Yeah, just pick up there. Thank you. Oh, wait. No, we can't.
Yeah? Okay. So we did also talk about adding some times in that we're going to do either Teams or some kind of Zoom so that we have more discussion time to talk about the aspects of the funding and the differences of what we can do in the school zones and the walking areas. And the Assembly had some great information about some legislation change that they're bringing up about raised crosswalks in school zones and safe walking areas. So those are two things that I just thought would be a good add to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else, and I'm not hearing from Mr. Cross.
And Mr. Cross had to step away.
Okay.
Was there anyone else who wanted to add anything?
He's got his hand up.
Mr. Cross is back. Go ahead, Mr. Cross.
Oh, yes. Yeah, the safe routes to school. So we had a meeting this morning from about nine to nine forty-five. Just a quick update on the safe routes to school, we did decide to.
Mr. Cross, we seem to have lost you. Mr. Cross?
Different design plans that they're working on. We're moving forward to funding, which is why we're increasing the frequency of the meetings. And in regards to the AO or the code change, yes, it is looking at doing raised crosswalks in specific areas of those where we increase the design standard. In those areas identified to be the most prominent. So it's been a little slow going as we accumulate data. But now that we've got past the data phase, when we get into funding, it should be accelerating in our efforts. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. And thanks to all of the members on the school board and the Assembly and the administration for your work on this really important issue. This is something that has come up pretty much at every meeting in terms of concerns about walking routes and student safety. So thanks, everyone, for your work. It's great to see this progress being made. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering, you know, we've had an unusual amount of snow this year. And so it's made it very challenging for some students who live close to schools, who walk to school. I'm wondering if, do we know, do we have kept statistics as to how many students didn't make it to class this year? Because they didn't feel it was safe to walk or their parents didn't feel it was safe to have them walking?
I don't believe we have that data at this time, but we could review attendance. It's important for us to know the impact of snow days or inclement weather on walking. But I don't have that data on hand. It's a great question.
I mean, yeah, I just happen to think that, you know, usually if you miss school, they want to have some sort of excuse why you were gone. And so the excuse might be how it wasn't safe to walk to school because of all the snow or whatever. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other comments or questions before we move on? Mr. Cross?
Thank you. Yeah, regarding Mr. Peterson's comment, we did, you know, that, that information is a little hard to obtain because it depends on the reporting of the parents. So we did discuss it, the Safe Routes to Schools meeting. You know, a lot of that was basically complicated by the school bus shortage and then, and then the significance in snow. And so what we, what we got hit, we just got hit from all different angles at the beginning of the year. Unfortunately, a lot of those situations have resolved themselves now that we're back to, you know, adequate transportation, adequate bussing, you know, extra funding from the Assembly in order to deal with the, the snow load. And so we've, we've been able to resolve a lot of those issues. And so it's more business as usual. We still have challenges. There's still areas we've identified as having snow removal issues just as we run into capacity. But yeah, that, that metric as far as how many, it would be individual reporting. I don't know if we'll be able to obtain that. But I will tell you that, you know, what happened in the beginning of the year was just a really unusual circumstance. And so that's part of what drove the Safe Routes to School initiative is understanding what do we need to do to prepare for this? Because inevitably, we may be faced seeing something like that begin in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Member lessons?
I don't want to speak on behalf of the school board, but as a member of the school board, something that I've been concerned with for some time is the problem of chronic absenteeism. And, you know, I think a question of how much chronic absenteeism has been exacerbated by snow days is maybe a part of that larger problem, but it's a nationwide problem. There was a piece on All Things Considered yesterday on chronic absenteeism. It's sort of double this year from what it had been prior to COVID. And so it would be interesting, it could be interesting for the board and administration and Assembly to figure out ways to possibly partner to better communicate with families, build relationships, maybe have more people knocking on doors to figure out why kids aren't getting to school. So that might be something to talk about down the road.
Thank you, member lessons.
And that is on one of the topics that's on a future work session for the board to get a grip on.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item two under G, which is Charter School System Equity Discussion. And Ms. Quinn-Davidson, you raised this item? I did, yeah. Thank you for getting it on the agenda. And just as background, probably four years ago, I was talking with then Superintendent Dr. Dina Bishop about ways that we could improve both diverse attendance in charter and lottery schools. Just sort of as a neighborhood example, for me, I live in Turnigan. A lot of my upper middle-class friends, not a lot of, all of them who live in my neighborhood do not go to Turnigan Elementary. They use the lottery system. They go to Aquarium mostly, or Chugash, optional for elementary. And those schools, you know, Aquarium, for instance, does not offer lunch or breakfast. And so, and does not offer bussing, as I understand it. And so really, you can only go to that school if you have parents who have really flexible schedules. And certainly if your, you know, mom or dad is working two jobs and not in sort of a higher management job, probably very unable to drive you to school. So to me, I think we have a real problem in our schools. And I'm obviously not the first person to bring it up. I know that we're all aware that this is a problem. And when I was talking with Dina, talking about, you know, brainstorming ways, and particularly under the budget constraints y'all are in, you know, it's really hard to, for instance, offer bussing, right? But one of the things that we came up with was in the renewal of the contracts with the charter schools and the renewal of the charter, could you require, for instance, that they provide free breakfast and lunch? Now, that's not going to solve the problem because it's not going to get the kids there necessarily. But we know that if you don't provide that, it automatically excludes a population of kids. And I think for society, what we're seeing is richer, or getting richer and poorer, getting poorer. And the more that we drain kids from the neighborhood schools and put them in these, you know, white, wealthy environments, the further that divide gets. So I've been really sad watching the trajectory of Anchorage schools. And, and, and I don't, I think the schools are good quality, so I'm not trying to be overly critical. But I think that the charter system is, is failing in a lot of ways. And so anyway, I've been sort of harping on this for years, but I'm wondering, recognizing the budget constraints that we're in and how frustrating that is, what are things we can do and what are things the board is doing to acknowledge and address that problem? And move forward to try to make our schools reflect the diversity, whether it's in race or background or class or income level that we really see in our communities.
Sure, I'd be happy to provide some high-level thoughts. I think you and I share the same sentiment that those exact issues, such as access to food and transportation, are a huge driver for the, the demographics that we currently have in charter schools. And I would say even beyond just charter schools, I know I see guardrail one on the agenda, but really schools of choice in general. So I think those are our best levers to, to really make a dent. To your point, even beyond the budget, I am very wary about the transportation situation because the last thing anybody in the community would want would be to have another bussing crisis. So we've implemented some changes such as raising the wages and thinking about ways to provide summer jobs for bus drivers so they never go to the tourism industry or other providers for the summer, so they stay with ASD. So we have a lot of exciting things in the works. So I want to see how well that can work with the population that we have. So that way, perhaps in future years, we can get to a place to where we can comfortably offer transportation. I truly do think that's the number one thing that we can do to offer access. But it's going to take some time, especially given the large geography of ASD of thousands of miles, to really create policies and structures that are sensible and accessible for students and families. So that's why transportation isn't something that we've recommended off the bat for next school year. But as superintendent, it's something that I truly believe would be a huge driver in addition to the, the food and nutrition. Yep. So I do think that you bring up an interesting suggestion when it comes to the charter itself. I'm not aware of that conversation happening in the past, but I'm interested in looking further into that because perhaps that's a lever to provide something, to encourage the APCs to do something to really ensure that we have diversity in our rosters there. Then in addition, the district's focus is on getting more applicants of color to these schools and making sure that families and students are aware of all the great benefits of these different options so they can choose the option that's best for them and their circumstances. So we've really ramped up a lot of our external outreach, and I think we can even take it to the next level. I think there might be some things that we can look at with regards to the lottery system in general. Oh, stop talking, that's my TED Talk, but I'll ask the staff if there's anything that you'd like to add that we're doing that could really move the needle on this.
You know, I can add on the food. We've looked at food at charter schools for quite a few years. And if you look at Aquarium, Winterberry, Rikishul, they don't have kitchens. The one space at Rikishul was maybe four by eight, four by nine, where they're storing basketballs. So it, in theory, it would be great to be able to provide food. But the National School Lunch Program and the municipality of Anchorage, there would be nothing for them to inspect to be able to make it a certified kitchen because there's, there's simply no space. And for many of these schools, they were designed without kitchens. So it's very problematic. The last time we looked at Winterberry, we were working with one of the local organizations and they were going to charge just under $8 per lunch per child, which is significantly more than, than we would get reimbursed. And, and because of the National School Lunch Program rules, we would have had to just eat those costs. So food is certainly problematic unless we were to close more elementary schools and/or, or other schools and schools were available for charters to move into. That would certainly change things if there was a kitchen. But the very first thing you have to have is a kitchen to be able to serve food. And unfortunately, many schools, and, and you can look at, and we only have one charter school currently that's part of the NSLP, and that's ANCCS, and they have been for years. Because when they leased a facility, they ensured that a kitchen was part of it. So it really goes to the very beginning of the formation of a charter school and their intentions as to what they'll be able to apply, as to what the facility that they occupy is, is able to support. And that, that's a challenge when it comes to transportation. We're upgrading our routing software. We'll be implementing a GPS tracking system to look if we can get more efficiencies in our routing over the next year. But what we don't know is even though we increased bus driver salaries significantly, we know that the tourist industry can spend on a dime, as we saw last fall, where some of them offered $10,000 bonuses to stay through the end of tourist season. And now that's gone all the way into the month of October. We don't know what the impact of that is any more than the municipality knows how many plow drivers will be still driving buses, right? So we're both in that exact same boat as to being uncomfortable over promising on transportation to charter schools next year until we see how this plays out.
Thank you. Sure, go ahead, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. Thanks for those responses, and I'm really excited you're here, Dr. Bryant, because I think, I believe that you're committed to this. And that makes me feel really good about the direction of the school district. To the practical challenges, there certainly are practical challenges. We're really good at identifying all the reasons we can't do things. And I don't mean that just to you, I mean all of us, right? And I guarantee those parents, you take Aquarium, you tell them they have to serve breakfast and lunch or they can't have their school operate, and they will find a way to do it. They would probably love to partner with you to do it. I, I know that that's not always the solution, but I think we want to be a part of the solution. This, basically, this has been the same conversation since I've been here for years. I'm sure it was brought up before then. So I just hope that we continue to make progress because it's our poor and vulnerable kids who are missing out. Thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. Anyone else? Go ahead, President Bellamy?
Just a comment, maybe two. You know, in Margot's world, if everything was equitable, accessible, we would be operating from a student choice lens. We would make sure kids had access to where they want to go. But we also know that parents, when parents make the choice to send their, we have given parents lots of choices. And that is a hard part of, I mean, it's not hard to give parents choices. But you know, when we, we get people used to a certain but you know, when we get people used to a certain program, a certain way, a certain identification, and it's always, it's difficult. It's difficult to, to, as with this last budget process, we want to give everybody everything they want. And we've got to, the choices are going to be very hard. We can't continue to give everybody what they want. But I would like to provide some framework where students in consult with their parents can choose where the program they want to go to and be able to get there without having to have parent transportation, right? So I know that that is in my world, and I know that that's not practical right now, but I don't want to lose sight of that. And so, part of, I think, one of the things, going back to what the district is doing, I mean, we had a special schools fair, I forget what, I don't think they called it special schools fair, but we had an event here at the Ed Center that was open to all of the community. Because one of the barriers is people just don't know. They don't see that Aquarian is for my kid, it's for somebody else's kid. And so, we've got to break down the, whatever that imaginary or real barrier is where people don't see those schools for themselves and for their kids. I am a neighborhood school mom. I want my kids to go to their neighborhood schools. So anything outside of that, when they were in elementary school, was not even a thought for me. But when they got into middle school and high school, then I started thinking about whether or not, what would be the right place for them? And so, so we still have work to do. I think we're operating like we've operated over the years. And I think now that we are challenged financially, we've actually got to change and redesign how we deliver services to our kids and our families. And I think this, the whole way that we, that we provide choice probably has to have a deeper discussion.
Thank you, President Bellamy. I have Member Jacobs, and then Member Lessons next. Go ahead, Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank Member Quinn Davidson for the question and the observation regarding our current administration making this a priority and having a vision for how we can get there, maybe just not with a finite end date at this point. I've had the same observation. One of the frustrations I've had since joining the board is, you know, we started in a place where we couldn't even acknowledge that transportation was a barrier initially. And I don't see, the tenor from administration has changed, and I'm grateful for that. I continue to see this as a priority for us, and I'm glad it is a guardrail. And so, I will continue pushing administration. And I've talked with Mr. Anderson and Dr. Bryant multiple times about this issue, just even this year. And so, please continue holding us accountable. Please keep asking this question because this issue cannot be allowed to fade into the background. We have to get this done regardless as to what Juno decides to do with funding. Our kids deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Member Lessons?
Thank you. This is maybe a technical question. The family enter, uses the lottery program, the lottery application process, which is open right now for the next couple of weeks. Are they ever confronted with additional, I don't know, follow-up questionnaires? Or I would call them hurdles, or hoops to jump through to apply to a certain school? So if you choose to apply to school A or school B or school C, are any of them going to offer additional requirements for continuing that application? Because that would be an obstacle, that could be an obstacle.
That's a great question. Mr. Peterson, do you have a response?
Yeah, through the Chair, Member Lessons, we, there isn't any other application piece or anything. Once you put in for a lottery for any specific program or multiple programs, you are in the lottery. Now, one thing that we do have is we have wait lists, and those wait lists are static so that whenever a person, say they put their kiddo into, they do a lottery application and don't get in, and they're maybe number 56 for a specific program. And the next year, they might be number 40, and so on and so forth. So those wait lists don't change. They're static. And then as new people come onboard, they, they get added to that wait list. So we have some schools that have 600 kids on a wait list right now. So as we're, when we're looking through our data through guardrail number one, we're looking at applicants right now and are really trying to build up that applicant pool for, with kids that are underserved. We just now have our baseline data for guardrail one that we got for this school year. And in fall of '23, we will have, be able to compare what we've done this year with our expo and going to the LUSAC library for theirs and having our prayer nights for immersion and so on and so forth. And we'll be able to look and see if the applications of kids that are underserved, if we're making any headway there. We have a lot of work to do. Just looking at our specific baseline, we have a number of groups that are very low representation. The highest or the least represented group is our Pacific Islander group, by far from anywhere else. So we need to, we're just being able to now start developing those plans to get out, to get more applications. And I do believe we're going to have to look at our lottery system and see what we can do and possibly get more of our neighborhood kids into some of the lottery programs. But that will be something we have to bring forward and get some changes on.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
My hand was still up from previously. I'll take it down. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Quinn Davidson, for raising this issue. Okay, we will move on to the next item, number three, update on guardrail one.
That's actually part of what the discussion we just had is guardrail one, that the superintendent will not operate our application special and application-based schools or lottery and application-based schools without addressing underrepresentation. So that is our guardrail number one. So in achieving our goals, our three goals, reading proficiency, math proficiency, and life, college, and career readiness, the superintendent will not allow underrepresentation in any of our schools, especially those special and charter schools. So that's our, part of our, what's important for the board. And that is where we will continue to put resource and work with the superintendent to ensure that students have access to all of our programs. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything else, Dr. Bryant?
I think I shared the bulk of my comments previously, but I do want to share with the ASD board that will provide an update on guardrail one for your review and feedback, I believe, next Friday.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from anyone? I don't see anyone in the queue. We'll go ahead and move on to item four, advocacy partnership to increase the BSA.
So yes, thank you. This, of course, Member Lessons, actually, I'm going to let her speak to this in a minute. But I do want to thank the Assembly for the resolution and the partnership. I mean, really, I don't know, I don't know that I've witnessed the kind of support that this board has gotten from the Assembly. I mean, we've been partners, but not in the same way that we are partners now, and I am appreciative of that. So, Member Lessons, I'll give you the opportunity to talk, and then we'll come back to, hopefully, getting, those of you who are here, getting you to sign this joint, and I'll read it for the record, but getting you to sign this before you leave. Member Lessons?
Great. Well, I think this is a really wonderful partnership, but I'm not going to take a whole lot of credit for it. Back in Juneau, a few weeks ago, AASB, Alaska Association of School Board Members gathered, and an invited speaker came up from Washington State to talk to members about the importance of advocacy. And one of her points was to look for your partners. And the thought bubble was, oh, the Assembly is a great partner. How can they partner with us to help advocate for the BSA? And Member Jacobs and I were in a conversation, and he was aware that a few weeks prior, the Assembly had prepared priorities, a legislative priorities packet. And there it was, you were already spot on and supportive of increasing the BSA. And so, the next step was then to simply ask for a formal partnership with respect to an inflation-proof BSA increase, which is going to serve our entire community. It will promote job retention, recruitment. It'll help be an economic driver of the future, and it's going to help serve our students' needs when we really think about core class sizes and all of the supports that our students need. So I thank you for that enthusiastic partnership, but I was happy to collaborate.
So do you want me to read it for the record? So for the record, Friday, March 3rd, 2023, to the Honorable Representatives Ortiz, Debert, Carrick, Shragi, Armstrong, and Hemsht. Thank you for your co-sponsorship of House Bill 65. Its $1,250 adjustment to the BSA is very closely aligned with the needs of the Anchorage School District, which has calculated that an inflation-proof BSA for FY24 would need to increase by $1,268 to $7,228. Currently, ASD has $80 million less in purchasing power than it did during the 2016-17 school year. This is due to seven years of unchanged BSA, decline in enrollment, and inflationary drivers. Although ASD has closed schools, generated new revenue streams, promoted a variety of efficiencies, and relied on one-time funding to maintain programs, services, and staffing, its FY24 budget is relying heavily on remaining federal relief funds and fund balance in order to balance next year's $68 million structural deficit. Without any adjustments to the BSA, ASD's structural deficits will increase to $78 to $85 million during the FY25 school year. $91 to $105 million for FY26, and $104 to $125 million during FY27. Both ASD and the municipality of Anchorage have prioritized an increase to the BSA as well as inflation-proofing the BSA as shared legislative priorities for this current session. Our bodies recognize that prioritizing and investing in public education is critical to our student success and a thriving community. Thank you for your commitment to that future. And so, there is room for everyone to sign. I've already signed, and we will, so we'll pass it around. And thank you very much for your partnership and continued support.
Thank you, President Bellamy. And we have some members who are not here who have interest in signing the letter, so we may want to talk offline how we can do that. Go ahead, Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Thank you. I was just wondering, you named some legislators who it was addressed to. Are they the chairs of the Education Committee or something, or what?
They are the sponsors of Bill 65, I think. Yes.
Okay.
Now, that's not saying, so yeah, they're the sponsors of the actual bill.
Great.
And I want to mention that Resolution Number AR 2023-57 is the resolution that the Assembly unanimously approved at the meeting of February 21, 2023. And just the title of that resolution, "A Resolution of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly Supporting Inflation-Proofing the Base Student Allocation and Urging State Legislators to Support Legislation to Forward Fund and Increase the BSA to Adjust School Funding for Inflation." And that resolution has been posted with today's meeting materials. It can also be found if you go to muni.org/assembly and search for prior legislation. Member Lessons?
Thank you. I just wanted to, for the record, say that indeed, those individuals are on the House side. There is a similar bill on the, from the Senate Education Committee. So deeply appreciative of that one. This one happens to be a little more closely aligned to the scope and scale of ASD's need.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to echo appreciation for the passage of the resolution and already incorporating this need into the municipal legislative priorities. Just more broadly, on the topic of advocacy, you know, there was some discussion earlier about is there other things that could be done? What the board is doing, I think, with some success is leveraging personal networks and connections to encourage advocacy by the broader public to legislators. Frankly, legislators don't necessarily, aren't always thrilled to hear from school board members. You may see that as well, potentially during visits. When we bring our students to the Capitol, they are typically much warmer, much more warmly received than we are in some offices. And so, to the extent that members of the Assembly so choose and can engage their networks to encourage elected officials to take action in Juneau, that I think is a real intangible step that can be taken. And if we're going to pass meaningful legislation this session before the House and Senate gavel out, I think that's what it will take. Member Lessons alluded to comments regarding the need for education funding is hocus pocus. That member resides in South Anchorage, I believe. I think he needs to hear from constituents that they don't necessarily agree, if that's the case. There are other members who feel like increased accountability is necessary and that the current accountability levers that the state and local municipal governments have isn't sufficient. And so, hearing from constituents about what they value in public education, what their vision is for how schools should be operated is going to be critical. Our voice, you know, collectively, we have, you know, two dozen folks who gather around the table, digitally or in person. The broader Anchorage community needs to weigh in on this issue, I think, for there to be significant movement. So that's been my focus. I know other members on the board's focus, and feel free to join us in that effort, and thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs, and thanks to you and Member Lessons and President Bellamy for your work in bringing forward this partnership and making it happen. I have Member Lessons and then Mr. Peterson in the queue.
Thank you. I think I wanted to just share my deep concern that there are legislators who are envisioning discussions about a BSA increase as a two-year process. And I don't think we have two years. If you look at some of our schools right now, you're going to see an enormous bell curve of classroom sizes. Based on January data that we received, we have 25% of our elementary school classrooms, you know, exceed 25 students per class. There are 37 classrooms with more than 30 students per class. If you look at the state of some of our schools following the snowpocalypse, their roofs are leaking. They've had to move desks around and use half of the classroom space to dodge the buckets. And that changes the instructional quality. And where does the money come from to repair those roofs and those ceilings so that they can have a functioning classroom as soon as possible? A year in the life of a child is an enormous amount of time. If you think about the growth that a kindergartner experiences into first grade, that's 20% of their life, right? So I don't think we have two years to make these kinds of changes because the scope, we've emptied the piggy bank this year to balance the FY24 budget. And we don't have any more federal relief funds or state one-time funds or a fund balance that we can spend down any further for FY25. So to those legislators who are interested in really deflecting things for another year, we don't have the time.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to mention that there were several of us who traveled to Juneau last week. There were Ms. LaFrance and Ms. Quinn Davidson and I and other Assembly members were down advocating for some of our priorities. And one of those was an increase in the BSA. And I'll have to tell you, I've spent a little time in Juneau over the years. And I don't remember an increase in the BSA being quite as prevalent in previous times when I was in the legislature or in the 10 years in the interim. I actually think there is a will among a number of legislators this year to actually get a BSA increase passed. What that number will be is the sticking point because the higher the BSA increase goes, the lower the PFD goes. And so I think we can expect that that will probably go down to the very last day of session before they come up to the final number. And hopefully it will be enough of an increase to fill the gap that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I put myself in the queue. Member Lessons, you referred to the comment about two years. And when I saw that, that just kind of blew my mind because, you know, all of this conversation that we have had now for a few years about the fiscal cliff and how clear it is that flat funding is a funding cut. And, you know, where we are right now, it's a question of values. It's a question of choices and do we value a quality education for our children? I mean, this is a major community issue and I agree. We need to rally together to help legislators understand that we don't have two years. And cuts have been made as, you know, in prior meetings, we have discussed and gone through in great detail. And there have been efficiencies and additional revenue sources identified as well. And at this point, I think that there's some serious soul searching that needs to happen. I mean, do we care about the quality of the education of our children? Do we care about their future? Do we care about the future of our state? Sorry, I've got, I still have two kids in ASD schools. And this is something as a person who, as a family, you know, where we were deciding where to live, quality of schools is a big piece of it. And I am really grateful to all of you for leading this effort to work together to advocate. It's so, so important. I mean, we all know how important it is. Here we are, you know, talking about it. And I wish there was hocus pocus in the sense that, yeah, I wish that, you know, you could wave a wand. And, you know, not only are your schools funded, your staffing needs are met and transportation is available to charter in optional schools. So thank you for what you're doing and I'm happy to work with you to advocate. And this is such an important issue, especially at this moment. So thank you. Anyone else in the queue? Anyone on your end? I don't see any hands raised. Okay. Well, that brings us to H. Member Comments. Should we go ahead and start with those members on Zoom? You want to go ahead and run through President Bellamy?
Okay, so we have, we'll start with members online. And I'm going to go in the order of my screen. Where'd it go? Hold on. Okay, top of my screen, Member Jacobs. Do you have any closing comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I was scrambling to look at my calendar really quick. This might be our last joint meeting before the upcoming municipal election, which means this might be our last joint meeting with a couple of members of the Assembly. And so I did want to take a moment to thank Members Quinn Davidson, Member Peterson. And I'm sorry, I think there's one more and I stepped aside. And so where I know there's going to be significant turnover on the Anchorage Assembly and Ms. LaFrance, there it is. So I know the body will see significant turnover. So I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that. Thank each of you for your service and your advocacy of public education. You folks will be missed at these meetings and so I wanted to honor that. Also wanted to acknowledge and thank staff for the detailed presentation today and everything that you are doing to make public education happen in a really challenging environment. I'll leave it there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Mr. Cross?
Yes, thank you. And, you know, just to add to that, I do realize the Assembly will have a, will take different shape of, we don't know what that'll look like in April, but, you know, my intention is to continue promoting, you know, expanding our BSA, getting additional funding as well as opportunities we can as an Assembly to encourage parental involvement in education, which is unfortunately really low. And, you know, Austin Quinn Davidson, right now with her AO to for parental leave and different things that we're working on. You know, there's things other than money we can do to help contribute to the children's education. And it is my intention to continue that torch. And I've been very thankful to work with our current Assembly on these items. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. In addition to our collaboration seeking an increase to the BSA, I also appreciate the collaboration between the Assembly and the school district over changes that are really needed to the funding formula for schools by the state that includes an updated district cost differential study. We need to continue to push really hard for that because the current one is very unfair to Anchorage taxpayers. And also other reforms such as acknowledging that transportation is pretty much a fundamental cost of delivering the educational services in a metropolitan area. And I think we should seek teaming up with our, the folks in Fairbanks and Juneau and Matsu and Kenai, the big five school districts, to seek additions to the current state formula that acknowledges that should just be a fundamental cost of doing business for school districts. That would help free up funds to address some of the equity issues with charter schools also. So I look forward to continuing this collaboration and expanding it into areas that would be very beneficial for Anchorage taxpayers.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Salt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A great meeting as usual. I agree, there's a lot of changes coming. I know we'll hear from Ms. Quinn Davidson, Ms. LaFrance, having children pending and in the school district. But I think the silver lining is I also see a lot of alignment here between the Assembly and the school board and I'm sure between other school boards. And to me, alignment's key. Get all the flashlights pointing in the right direction and we can move mountains. So I really look forward to continuing to work with ASD. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zalatell? I saw Ms. Zalatell. Uh oh, looks like we lost her. So we'll go to Member Wilson online.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to echo what I've heard from other Board members and thank you, just to thank you to the Assembly for your continued partnership and your advocacy of public education and our kids. So thank you.
Okay, that completes the online members. I lost Members Zalatell. I didn't get to her. She might, I'll let you know if she comes back up.
Thank you, President Bellamy. We'll go ahead and go around the room. Do you want to start?
Yeah, I'd just like to, again, just thank the Assembly. Those of you who are going to be having like a life of leisure now, we do appreciate and really your partnership, your service to the community. Suzanne, Austin, Pete, thank you so much. We know you're not going to go away. You'll still be around doing stuff, but thank you. And we look forward to always having you at our Board meetings, always. I just had a couple of things. Thank yous again. You know, the grant that the Assembly approved recently for the Board's communication resource, that was amazing. We have had, as you know, ample reasons to use that service. And we're glad that you were able to do that. Not to mention the help we've gotten for mental health, for our pre-K program. Those things don't go unnoticed. We may not share them every single time, but we, they don't go unnoticed. And we are thankful for those. And again, thank you for your partnership with the advocacy. And if there's anything that you need from ASD, you know, we're only a text or a email away, even when you enter your life of leisure. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Dr. Bryant, any comments?
Sure, I'll just echo the previous comments. We want to thank the Assembly for your ongoing partnership. It truly makes a difference and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Member Lessons?
I feel like I've already spoken quite a bit this meeting, but I appreciate one last opportunity. I just want to underscore that although the Board has multiple priorities, we talked about the three Bs, the BSA, bond debt reimbursement, and busing. I think we all need to focus on that BSA this year. That needs to be the single-minded consensus item. Because if that doesn't change, my sense is that our options less, I mean, next year, we're going to, the only options we will have will involve lowering our standards. And that is going to have negative consequences for our student outcomes. So I would invite everyone to, there is the Legislative Town Hall on Sunday afternoon at the Rasmussen, at Rasmussen Hall at UAA. And I will be there wearing red to support education. And I think we can collaborate and partner. And I just want to underscore that we have consistently allocated funding towards the most effective paths forward. And we have backfilled our budget with available funds to try to continue to do so. And I keep coming back to the term treading water. And we're only going to be able to tread water for so long.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I've always been a pro-education individual. I come from a family of teachers on my mother's side of the family, all the way back to my great-grandmother, who graduated from Iowa Normal School in 1890. And all the way up to my sister, who retired from ASD here after 20 years, about five years ago. And so, yeah, when I was in the legislature, I was pushing for BSA increases and we actually did get a $100 increase for three consecutive years. So that was a good thing. Unfortunately, legislators in the last decade have not continued with those increases. And that's why we find ourselves advocating for over $1,000 increase or over $1,200 increase in the BSA this year. And there, all four of us, Assembly members who are present in person today will not be at the next meeting between the Assembly and the school board three months from now. So yes, there definitely will be a change of face on who's going to be attending these meetings from the Assembly in the future. Anyway, thank you and continue all your good work to try to increase and improve education in Anchorage. Because that's how a person can move themselves from the lower economic status that they may have started on and end up being a successful individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Sweet?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo the comments already made about doing the advocacy work in Juneau. My Juneau trip via Wendy Chamberlain is not yet specifically dated. I'm told the latter half of March, but the BSA increase is definitely going to be a priority for when I attend and when I am able to speak with lawmakers down there. I don't even know yet exactly what the other priorities are going to be. So as of right now, it's the first, last, and only. We have to get that BSA increase. It's just like when I was on the Board of Regents. The only thing that mattered was what that check from the state looked like because that's going to determine things like vacancy rate. It was tough to articulate to stakeholders, this is it. This is the thing that matters. But what, to the extent that we have a benefit from that, it's that it gives us something to focus on, something to, I like Members Salt's comment about shine all the flashlights in the same direction. That's exactly how it works. So I look forward to getting to do that, whenever that may be, sometime later this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweet. Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Thanks, everyone, and thanks for all the nice comments. We haven't, I guess this is the first meeting we've had where we've started to say goodbye. So it's kind of, it's kind of sad, I know, for a lot of us and hard to know how we'll stay engaged. And, you know, these jobs are just crazy and hard to maintain. But it's also really inspiring to get to work with all of you who care about kids and care about making our community better and stronger. So thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for partnering with us on, you mentioned Margot, getting mental health programs in schools and making sure SROs were paid for out of our budget so you can put money to kids and teachers. And yeah, just so thankful for all you here and really excited about the new superintendent. And I think you're going to do great things and let us know how, those of us who are no longer here in an official capacity, how we can help because some of us are pretty good at causing trouble. And I'll speak for myself, but happy to help with that however I can.
I just wanted to, thank you, Madam Chair, just acknowledge that we absolutely love hosting these meetings, but really the Board gets a lot of help. And so for every meeting that we have, we have people that are here. And I just want to acknowledge Amanda and Jennifer because they coordinate all of this and then they help set it all up. And then our amazing staff always prepare, always come prepared. I mean, Andy, great presentation today as always. And they're always here, willing and able to give the information that's needed. I just didn't want that to go unnoticed because it, for us to do this, it adds to your plate and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bellamy. And, you know, that makes me think of Member Lessons' comment about, oh, do we need custodians? And do we need, you know, other staff and IT staff and you name it? And President Bellamy, what you said about who makes this meeting happen and work is just so spot on as I hold up this 10-pound page budget book and wonder, you know, how many folks went into making just that piece happen. So thank you all for your work and thank you also for the kind words. I had forgotten this would be the last joint meeting for some of us with all of you. And I really have appreciated collaborating with you for the last six years and the thoughtful conversation. I have a deep respect for how hard your jobs are, especially in, as Member Jacob said, these challenging times, which we're definitely in. So thank you all for what you do and your advocacy and who you continue to serve. And that is the young people who live in our community and the families as well. It's hard, yeah, it's kind of hard to say goodbye. I kind of forgot about that piece of it, darn it. But we're not going anywhere. We'll be here as Ms. Quinn Davidson said. So thanks, everybody. Happy Friday and happy Employee Appreciation Day. And thank you for all that you do. That brings us to public participation. Do we have any student comments? We do not today. And we do not have any public comments. The next meeting, the next joint meeting will be sometime in June this year. It will be here. And that brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion? And that brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded.